Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, September 11th. We are coming to you this evening from the School Committee Room in the Savage Center. We are hybrid this evening. In attendance, I have Ms. Kate Simming-Dunn and Mr. David Hiltz. And remote, we have Ms. Teresa Stewart and Dr. Joan Giblin. Can I please ask everyone that is in attendance to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so getting right down to business, our first order of business is approval of minutes. In your packets, you have two sets of minutes from the August 27th open session as well as the executive session. Are there any questions on the minutes this evening?
Move to approve both executive session and open session minutes from August 27th.
Okay, moved by David. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kate. All is in favor. I have to call poll because I know there's going to be some probably abstentions, so I will actually start with our folks that are remote. So Teresa?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Yep. Joan?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Kate?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes 3-0-2. Alright, so on to the next item is correspondence. Mr. Luff, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Great. Alright, on to the next item is the warrant report. So this week, I signed warrants in the amounts of $1,825,637.52, $2,443.18, $475.70, $53,373.61, $8,989.47, $9,332.65, $180,248.78, $23,375.55, $264,563.23, $28,822.25, $104.30, and $2,264.33 for a grand total of $2,399,630.57. Are there any questions on the warrant report this evening? Great. Alright, so we will move right on to our next item, which is public comment. Reminder to the public that you can access public comment in a couple of different ways. You can, you can call the superintendent's office by noon the day of our meeting to receive a hybrid link to our public comment, as well as to put your name on our list to speak in person. You can also come to the Savage Center for our meeting and sign in in person at that time. And I will, I do not see anyone in attendance for public comment. Mr. Luff, did anyone call to sign up for public comment this evening?
No, he did not.
Great. So at 7:09 PM, I will declare public comment closed. Alright, so right on to our next item is the superintendent's report. Hand it over to Ms. Luff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna kick this off in chronological order, but I wanted to share with the committee an update on the opening days of school. And so the first part of my update, I'm gonna have Dr. Munoz take care of because it's all about staff professional development. As you remember, we shifted our staff professional development days prior to convocation this year, and by all accounts, it went fantastic. And before he goes on, I would just like to thank him very much for the work that he did in providing an incredible development for our staff this year.
Thanks, Tim. First, I couldn't have done this without the support of all of our administration team from Sean helping out, just logistics of stuff, obviously Tim's thought partnership, talking to even our union president, Jody Smith. Her and I have been talking about this for about six months before the year ended last year, so we were always talking about how to improve our professional development, even as we were going through discussions with the union for negotiations. So, you know, we, the benefit of this is I think that we're already seeing the dividends pay off in some of the classrooms, and so I'll talk a little bit about that. But we have decided to have a huge focus on student engagement. And so not necessarily having new curriculum, although we still do our curriculum refresh, but we all, we want to say, okay, we already know what teachers know, let's talk about how to engage more students into the content every day, an ongoing thing. So we had around 400 staff members, teachers, district admin, school admin, that's in professional development, the week before school started. And you can see the numbers are right there, where we had about 100 participants per building, so we had pre-K through 2nd, they were at the Willet, and then we had 3 through 5 here at the Senior Center. Shout to the Senior Center, that's a lovely place. Can we get one of those built over here? That would be really nice. The middle school was at Coakley, and then the high school was at the High School as well. And our district's staff was dispersed between all four sessions, so we had disrepresentation in all four sessions. And, you know, if people ask, what is, you know, what is Kagan? It's just a, it is a way to have structured group work and group learning because you have your traditional, you have your traditional learning, and you have group learning, and you have Kagan, which makes sure that all students are engaged, they're, which I'll talk about on the next slide, so you can go over to the next slide. You can see right there before you go to the next slide, that is our pre-K through 2 PD, and they actually practice the structure. So they learn the structure, they practice the structure, and they have time, sometimes to debrief how they would use it in their classroom, in whatever content they want to use it in. So that's them doing it, but basically, the difference between a group work and cooperative learning, is what we call it, is this four basic principles of HIGS. So we have positive interdependence, we have individual accountability, equal participation, simultaneous interaction. What that does is that says, okay, it gives everyone a role in the group, whether they're doing it with a partner, whether they're doing it in the group of four, or group of five, or group of three, to have purpose in the activity. It's not a competition where they're competing against one another, it's like, I need you to make sure we do our, our task. You need me, I need you, we cannot do this task without each other, that is what positive interdependence is. Individual accountability means that I'm gonna be able to show you something, I'm gonna hold myself accountable, and be able to show my other students, my other peers, the work I can do. Are we equally participating in the room? Is there, you know, if we're in a group of four, one person's talking, and then equally another person gets to share time, equally another person gets, everyone has equal time in that, in that activity. And then, is at least 25% of your room interacting at once? Which means at least, is at least 25% of your room writing or speaking to the other, to the other peers with equal participation, then we shift that and so forth and so on. So you can see right there, our teachers are practicing. We have one in the room right now, he's up here with this photo right here. So again, you can see, if teachers are actually doing this, they're actually modeling what classrooms should look like, so they're practicing the structure, so they just don't get told what the structures are. They're like, we're gonna practice it, so they're gonna get up, and they're gonna walk around, and they're gonna talk to people, they're gonna present, and they're introduced it, they're introduced the content in a non-academic, fun, easy way, so they just learn the structure. So it could be like, what's your favorite food? Or, what time do you wake up early this morning? So they're doing stuff that all, everyone can have access to, and then once they learn the structure, then they teach the content, ELA, math, science, social studies, SEL skills. And they do that. So that's a couple pictures there from the high school, and then from the middle school as well, where they were practicing some content. I'm not sure which structure it is because they didn't learn many that day. So, if you go to the next slide really quick. And, and so we wanted feedback, you know, we, I was hearing positive things, just talking to a couple teachers, but, you know, Kagan asked for feedback, we also asked for feedback on our vector system, and, and we had overwhelmingly positive feedback. So they, they send out a QR code for all the teachers at the end, rated 1 through 5, and you can see each building had at least a 4 or higher. So, and then some people, if they wanted to, they put, they would put sentences of what they gave feedback about, what they liked about it, what they didn't like about it. So we obviously are reviewing that as a district, I already spoke with the company and their trainers, because they debrief as a training group, because they'll be back in November for day two. Some of the feedback that we got that was constructive, but we can't help, is that they said it was a long day. Like, it's not very often you have to attend a PD all day long. Normally, you go for a half a day, and then you go do something else, and you go to the department meeting. It was one thing that we're gonna focus on, so we were going slow to make sure that people had time to process it, because if we just rushed through it, then we're not gonna, people would have questions. So you can see, and most of the staff filled out the survey, you know, at the high school, 91% of the people that attended filled out, filled out the survey. 77% at the pre-K to 2 and 3 to 5 filled out the survey, and then the Coakley, you know, three-fourths filled out the survey as well. So it wasn't just like 10 people filling it out saying it was great, it was like, the majority of people filled it out. And if they had feedback, we got the feedback and we taken it. So we're gonna read about it, talk about it, and see how we can introduce that. But I've been walking through classrooms, I know Mr. Luff has been walking through classrooms, and we've already seen these structures taking place through an SEL lens. Walked through a first grade classroom, they were walking around, doing a stand-up, hand-up, pair-up, and then their cue was, hello, my name is, and they had to shake hands. So they would do a stand-up, hand-up, pair-up, they would sit down crisscross, they would say, hello, my name is, shake hands, alright, I'm gonna get up and go find another partner. So kids are now having that movement, because we know that if we don't, they don't move, they get squiggly, and, you know, things could happen from there. And I just, I just heard a tidbit about an hour ago about the middle school, there were some really great structures happening at the middle school, and kids were really enjoying being able to talk more often than not. And so I think every teacher here works hard, but we want the students to work even harder, so we're trying to make the teachers' job easier by giving them these tools to say, okay, I'm gonna facilitate this, and you guys are gonna do all the talking, and I'm gonna come in and run monitors. So that's the whole goal of this. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. So we followed up the staff professional development days with an opening day convocation, and I think the best way to describe this to you, if you have not seen it already, is a quick video done by our students on the, on the news broadcast, and I'm gonna share that right now with you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Bridgette Kidd, and I am with Junior at Norwood High School. I'm excited to be back hosting our weekly Norwood School News segment. We hope you enjoy our broadcasts that will bring you right into the classroom, so you can see firsthand all the good things happening in our Norwood schools. The school year began with a convocation that was held Tuesday at Norwood High School. Teachers were welcomed back this year and treated with a red carpet entrance that was lined up by Mustang cheerleaders. Teachers were interviewed on the carpet by NHS TV student Brian Gaglierd and Danielle DeMadiya, and broadcasted in the gym and on the auditorium screen. They were then treated to a surprise lip sync video featuring school administrators dancing and having fun to Taylor Swift songs. New superintendent, Tim Luff, introduced himself to a packed auditorium and is excited to begin the school year. Then current students of all ages spoke on stage to highlight who and what they are grateful for. The final presentation was motivational speaker, Aaron Polansky, who provided teachers with takeaways that they can use immediately in their classrooms. He was passionate and gave real examples to help teachers become the best versions of themselves. It was a great way to kick off the year, and let's take a look at some highlights.
How was your summer?
I worked all summer, and I got ready for what's gonna be an incredibly exciting year here in Norwood. I'm so pumped to have our staff back, our kids back tomorrow, it's gonna be awesome, it's gonna be the new Norwood era, and I'm so pumped for everybody.
Alright, alright. I love, I love everything you're saying. I'm here with the Cleveland 5th grade, they had to deal with me as a little kid, which I feel bad for, I want to apologize now. How was you guys' summer?
Amazing. I loved it. It was awesome.
What'd you guys do?
Storylands, Santa's Village, beach.
There you go, everything.
Beach and hung out with the family.
We went to Bermuda. Had a great time.
And then what are you looking forward to this year?
Meeting the new crop of 5th grade. Hanging with my friends.
Yeah, having a great year.
There you go, I hope you guys enjoy it, thank you so much.
I just wanna start off the year with, you know, thanking each and every one of you for being in this room right now. I wanna thank all of the returning staff members for your continued dedication to this district and, you know, recognizing that Norwood is where you want to put your talents and your, and your passion. And we really appreciate it, we appreciate every time you return into your classrooms, into your buildings, every time you step across the threshold, we appreciate it. I also want to thank all of the new staff members for deciding that Norwood is where you want to put down your roots. I think you will find, very quickly, that you will find a place in this family. There is a place for everybody in this family, and the Norwood community, the Norwood staff and Norwood district will welcome you with open arms, and, and you will find your place very quickly here.
Someone's destiny is tied to your excellence. Each and everything that you do, every decision that you make, and every engagement that you have can make or break a child's future. That is a huge burden for any person to shoulder. But that is my challenge to you, my challenge to all of you, shoulder that burden, it's why we do what we do. So then you ask, how do you do that? Well, I believe that you teach, you lead, you care, and make decisions with your values. You all have them, so I want you to use them.
I appreciate the Norwood Public Schools staff because they make me feel safe, safe and happy. They make this school a great place for everyone. I appreciate my bus driver because he's, he says good morning with a smile on his face. My principal, Mr. Riley, is a real superhero. He's the kindest principal I ever had. He knows everyone's name, and he always checks if we're okay. And I'll never forget my first grade teacher, Ms. Outwash. She made learning fun, and, and I learned lots of things. I am so lucky to be a part of the Norwood Public School community. Thank you and have a great day.
I will say that again, you are hope dealers, you help other people excel, and everything that happens in their lives happens first between their ears and then between their hours, because you help to create it, no matter what your role is. I go back to, how do we replace mantra with vulnerability? And when you're high, honest, and improved situations, you can be yourself. And when you're yourself, we build connection. And when there's connection, investment increases, attendance improves, disciplinary referrals go down, and recruitment becomes easier.
That's it for the school news this week. We'll be back next week to highlight the opening of the school year.
So as you can see, it was quite, quite the production. A big thank you to everyone that helped put it together. Dr. Munoz put together an incredible video for us, along with our administrators. Our PTO and PTAs were out there, out front, cheering people in, being the Swifties. Our cheerleaders were in the lobby welcoming our folks. The, the school nutrition workers came out and helped with breakfast. Jack Tolman and NCM were there to record. We had student interviewers that were there as we walked in, the student band was incredible, and our amazing student speakers, I think we had one from every grade level that stepped up, similar to Noah there, and it really shared, it was an incredible experience. And I think the staff got some amazing things out of it, so thank you for everyone for, for doing that. Really, the ideal, the theme was to build relationships, and based on the feedback that we, oops, based on the feedback that we received, and we did, we did a quick thought exchange too. You can see the opening day convocation was highly praised for its unity, engagement, and motivational atmosphere. Attendees highlighted the excellent keynote speaker and positive start to the school year. Many found it to be the most engaging and meaningful convocation in years, fostering a district-wide sense of community. The involvement of students was particularly appreciated, making staff feel acknowledged and valued. Overall, the event was seen as inspiring, positive, and a great way to begin the new academic year. There were some questions about length, but even the folks that talked about length were like, it was so engaging, and everything was great, so it was really nice that way. And Aaron Polansky had a separate feedback piece, and as you can see, 241 responses. There were like 700 people in the audience, by the way, because we invited everyone, from admin assistants, to the food service, to transportation, to custodians. But you can see that 100% of the folks found his session to be valuable, 94% actually said they'd like to hear him again. So it was incredible feedback from everyone. And walking through the schools the next day, I tried to visit just about every classroom in every school, and every staff member that I saw actually pretty much came out and thanked us for the convocation in the day. And so that alone, I think, showed that it was, it was worthwhile. So really exciting to share that with the staff, and share it with you now.
The keynote speaker said, he's been in 44 states, and he said this was the best convocation that he's seen.
You can catch the full convocation, I gave it to, gave Jack the go-ahead to put it on NCM yesterday, so it should be on there now. You can see the full video that we created, as well as this, all the student speakers, so if you feel free to watch. I think the whole thing's around 40 minutes to an hour long, that's televised there, so have at it if you like. As you can see, I just wanted to put some opening day school pictures in here. You can see kids are all engaged, flags, I mean, as, as Dr. Munoz had said, you know, there was a lot of activities that came from the professional development, we think. I think I saw Kagan in just about every classroom that I went into, teachers practicing, trying. I also saw it being used with relationship building in general, right? So Kagan can be used as a wraparound for any kind of content, including the relationship building, that we ask for folks to engage in. Not that it doesn't happen anyway, I'm sure it always has, but it was certainly upfront and center as I walked through the schools. And you can see the kids are all engaged here at all levels, excited, you know, Turtle even made it in here at the bottom left, so they made that shot. And you can see some friendship bracelets, you know, that is directly from the Swift, Swifty stuff. High school had some folks greeting him in, welcoming him home, telling him to have a great year. So it was a really fascinating and wonderful opening day of school. As with any other opening, opening days, there certainly were some issues that occurred, few but minor transportation, few transportation events that typically always occur. We'll be having a debriefing with our Transportation Department upcoming to try to figure out why those were, and make sure they don't happen again in the future. Not surprising, but certainly they were, they were there. And again, we visited schools, and it was, it was amazing. And so, great opening to school, really excited about it, and I just wanted to share that with you all today. So I'll stop sharing that tab. I do have a few more things before we go on to the, the next one. Just, I would, if, if we could, I'd like to share in remembrance for those who lost their lives in September 11th, 2001. Our sympathy and our deep thoughts go out with all the folks that were impacted by that. You know, certainly, we also fly our flags at half-mast on this day, and all of our flags were flown at half-mast. There were some issues and some absences that had occurred that limited our ability to do that until about 8:20 at one school, so they were and still will be till this evening be flown at half-mast. So our hearts go out with the folks of, who lost lives in 9/11. I also want to share a potential, an update from this morning. There was a potential safety threat at Coakley this morning. We immediately conducted a threat assessment in collaboration with the Police Department and deemed that it was not a credible threat. This was actually a student who, who shared a social media post from Texas, from an event that occurred a few days ago. She was nervous about coming into school because she saw this post, that was a potential school threatening event, and it was shared with her peers. Her peers, thank you very much to those students at Coakley who reported that to the principal. Allowed us, when I was notified at 8:53, to work with the Police Department. We had worked with the chief, and the SRO had a, had a, started investigation, and I spoke to the chief around 9:06 this morning, and then we drafted a message to the community once we knew enough at 9:45, identified that it was an incredible threat. And then, and then I came back to the community at 11:01 and shared that it certainly wasn't with the details behind it. So, just a reminder to all those folks how seriously we take safety in our schools, and we will be vigilant in any activity or possible threatening incident. And again, thank you to those students who reported, that's exactly what we want folks to do. And, I think the last thing that I want to say before we get on to the next piece is just, I want to congratulate Unit A, who ratified their contract on Friday. It's fantastic, we're excited. Unit B will be voting tomorrow, and we believe that we'll, we'll have a good contracts in place for these two units. So thank you again for all that participated in the negotiations to settle some really good, solid contracts for our staff. And one more, because I keep on going. I want to remind folks that there is a public forum, are you gonna share that probably? I don't want to take your thunder.
No, go for it.
Okay. There is a public forum at Balch at 10:00 AM on Saturday regarding the elementary study, so we look forward to the community members who want to provide feedback regarding the possible scenarios you'll be considering at the end of October, to come to Balch at 10:00 AM on Saturday and join the School Committee and myself in a presentation, along with our partners from Sandborne. So, the next one, shall I go on to the DESI?
Yeah, so that's the update, but we have one other item under Superintendent Report.
Oops, did I just? Let me just pop this up on screen. So there's a memo in your packets, and this has been a conversation that has occurred prior, but essentially, I'm requesting that the School Committee authorize me to designate the Willet School and the LMPA as two distinct schools, and report such change to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The primary reason, as you all know, is that they, they've been identified as one school under the umbrella of Willet, was because they had, previously only had one principal, and they were located in the same location. Today, each school is located in a different building, they each have their own principal. The benefits really here are based on FERPA, or the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, where both school staffs currently have access, and has been, to the other students in the different schools where they really shouldn't, so that's one, one part that we're concerned about. DESI District reporting is difficult to do because we have to break out Willet when we do our reporting, and break out LMPA from the overall structure and the reporting requirements in the system, and that does take a significant amount of time, and just for individual school management functions. So for example, when the Willet staff wants to pull a recorder on their classes, they have to take out all the LMPA kids and mix and match, and it's really, it's really hard to segregate that way. I know there has been some, some questions about why we would not want to do this, right? We have an upcoming elementary study that could change things again, there were questions about whether it would impact finances, Title I, all these different things. And what I will say is, as I review the entire process, I don't see a negative impact to the district in any way. Academic ratings are not going to be impacted at all, because they're all at the early childhood levels, they're not reported in that way. Funding is not impacted by any of the grants, like such as Title I, because preschool-age children don't count, count towards the eligibility with Title I. And as far as IDEA and special education grants go, it's by student, it's not by, by school. And finally, Chapter 70 is not going to be impacted, as grade levels use determine the amounts that are allocated to the district. And just as an aside, I've done this multiple times now, the designating of a school, or grade levels within a school, to DESI is an incredibly simple process. It's a form that takes me about 30 seconds to fill out, I email it in, and it's done. And it's easy to change each year, so if we do end up modifying something in the future years, it's very easy to revert back to. There are questions about, you know, that we'll have to ask the LMPA folks and Willet folks, like, hey, what do we do with the PTO and the PTA and those kind of things? But other than that, I don't think that there is a significant impact here. So I'm asking you folks tonight to vote to designate the Little Mustangs Preschool Academy as its own school for DESI reporting purposes, but I'm sure there's gonna be conversation around it, so I will let you guys ask questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions about this memo?
Wow. I definitely expected more questions.
I think you answered a lot of the questions in the memo, so as long as, and I'm sure this, both staffs understand what's coming down the road if this happens.
As an aside, it gives the autonomy to the school, right? So they feel represented if they're not, you know, the LMPA staff, for example, right there, under the umbrella of Willet, you know what I mean? But they're their own staff, their own school, and I think giving them that, that feeling of independence is a, is a nice thing for them too, and they're excited.
Move to approve the memo for school designation, splitting the LMPA and Willet.
Second. Any other, any other questions before we vote?
I'd like to discuss, I don't have questions, which is why I didn't raise them up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I would like to discuss.
Let's discuss.
I'm trying to be good about following rules. So I'm against this. I have distinct memories of having the conversation about adding the director position. It was supposed to be a director position, that crept into a principal position, talking specifically about the fact that this was gonna end up increasing infrastructure and creating additional, an additional school. We talked about this two or three years ago, and we're sure that it would not. We're now at basically that final formal designation, and I'm against that. That was not the spirit through which this principal position was created. We were explicitly promised this actually would not happen. And I also go back to, while I understand, Mr. Luff, that you don't see that there's kind of contradiction or overlap here with the elementary study, we are having the elementary study, and Willet's included in that. So again, I don't want to make any changes until that study is complete. So again, I feel like this is a continuation- again, I feel like this is a continuation of the creep that began when we initially approved a director position that was shifted to a principal position, and some other things that have gone on that has created additional infrastructure that I just don't think we have the space and time to support. So I'm going to be voting against this. I don't have questions, I'm just putting it out there for discussion.
Can I actually, so Joan, correct that it was supposed to be the director position, it did creep to a principal, but it did creep to a principal, and that's what it is. So given that we are in a separate building already, so there's the infrastructures there regardless, the LMPA is not included in the elementary study because it would not be brought into that structure, correct?
Right.
So that's, that would be completely separate. What happens to the Willet will not impact the LMPA program here.
Right.
I guess I, I mean, certainly be, certainly be against it because that's your, that's your, you know, prerogative. But I guess I don't understand, with some of the points I don't understand because they already are. Does that?
I think it's, yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I think it stretches back even further. When we approved the move from the Willet to, I want to call the Savage the Wilbur Center, I'm not sure why that was popping in my head, but when we approved the move from the Savage to the Willet, again, we were told, this doesn't change anything, this isn't going to add anything, this isn't going to add any FTEs, this isn't going to change anything. And everything that has taken place with regard to the Willet, we have been told one thing, and then a year later it comes back, and there is an additional cost, additional ongoing costs and additional infrastructure.
Do you?
So unfortunately, Mr. Luff is dealing with the aftermath of the move from, when we moved folks from the Willet to the Savage, right? And we split those positions. All of that stuff, it just keeps creeping. It just keeps creeping.
Right, but just, Amory, I just would offer that it's all happened based on program growth, like more kids and outsizing our buildings and continued growth of the LMPA and needing more services, et cetera, right? So it's, it was organic in that sense. It wasn't that we were okaying and approving things that were not precipitated by kids' needs.
The fiscal cliff is organic, too.
I
The problem is, is it doesn't matter what, some of these things are nice to haves versus, again, this creep. That's a full FTE. I voted against it the first time, so.
But it's cost neutral.
We're coming
This particular thing is cost neutral, right?
Just, it's cost neutral today, but again, I've had a series of votes with regards to the Willet that I've been told would be cost neutral, that I told wouldn't change the way things are run, that I was told wouldn't change the infrastructure. And here we are today, I've only been on the committee for six years, for so, for in less than six years, and we're at this point, where, again, we're actually formally designating them as two separate schools, something that I have been told continuously was not going to happen.
I completely understand.
You can tell me that we're not going to end up needing more infrastructure. The past history, my past history involvement with this particular school is that that is not true.
I don't think we can say today that we won't need more infrastructure because we could need something new next year. We could have 100 kids suddenly come in. So I mean, I can't, we can't say that for sure, but.
But again, we're taking another step that further creates an additional school within our district.
Right.
I don't know what, I don't, I guess I don't trust that I have a full sense of what the ramifications will not be a year and a half from now. A year and a half from now, if we keep everything the same, we're still going to have the same, we could still potentially have 100 additional kids come in for preschool, right? What is, what is this gain for us? It doesn't necessarily gain anything.
Well, exactly.
So I'm voting kind of based on the path trajectory of this position, this move, and how the Willet got to where it is, and feeling like at some point, this isn't, this is the dog wagging the tail. Tail wagging the dog, sorry.
No, I understand, I understand your background from it and where you're, where you're coming from, and I'm certainly not going to try to change your mind. It just, I believe based on this and based on the conversations we've had in the past, that this really is just a, it's just a formality. For all intents and purposes, this, the LMPA is a separate school already because it resides in a completely different building, it needs its own nurse. Like there were things by physically moving those children out of the Willet that we had to have infrastructure-wise. Yes, completely agree with you around the, you know, creep of the, I kind of want to keep saying creep because that makes Kristen sound like a creep. You know, the transition to a principal position from the originally intended director position. But I think in this instance, like, like I said, for all intents and purposes, the LMPA currently and has for the last several years operated as a completely independent school, but just under, you know, with Willet attached to it.
And again, when we made that move, we were told there would be no additional costs.
Yeah, I think that was naive, not of us, not of us.
It may have been, but
Not of us.
It may have been naive, but it fooled me once, fooled me twice. Sorry to interrupt the person in that seat. So, and I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying.
They're actually new seats, just.
Oh, did you get new seats? I missed it?
They're so good.
Look, I'm not falling over.
Bless you.
I don't, I'm not going to get a core workout right now.
I mean, I don't need to, from my perspective, I don't need to keep talking about this, right? Because we're a voting board, not a consensus, not a consensus board. So I just wanted to make my feelings known.
That's why I said I'm not going to try to change your mind.
Question for the superintendent.
Yep.
Sorry, Joan. My question for Tim is, is there, what would be the ramification or impact if we delayed this until after the elementary study was concluded? Even though, as Amory pointed out, this doesn't really impact the LMPA. So I'm not saying my vote hinges on that, but just a little more information in response to Dr. Giblin's comments.
Sure. I mean, we've been operating under this for a little while now, right? Where the LMPA has been under the umbrella of the Willet. So no change is no change. You know, as I discussed, the FERPA ramifications are there, right? So we are, it is difficult because you can't have access in Aspen where Willet can't see LMPA and LMPA can't see Willet. So that is a FERPA issue that we have. Obviously, the reporting and pulling of reports is very difficult for staff to actually pull out and do. It takes a lot more time. And so there's some impacts there, there's no doubt. And you're ultimately operating two schools right now, and DESI, as far as they're concerned, has a principal in Michael as part, as the principal of both schools, when that's actually not the case. So in terms of how that impacts things, we have a school reported with one principal that's actually not the principal. So, you know, if you went to the state, you would see Michael Bollier, principal of LMPA. So there's those things, but we've been operating that way. So at the end of the day, it would just remain the way it is. So I'm doing this because it's, it seems, it seems, and again, Joan, I appreciate the history very much, so, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, it seems that they are operating as two distinct schools. So it's my duty to recommend that we report it that way, that's all. I mean, the elementary study could result in multiple things, right? The elementary study could result in, will it be a K to four school? In which case, would the LMPA still be part of that, right? So if it is a K to four school at the end, we would still have to do this likely. If it remains a K school, I would still probably recommend doing this because it's still two separate schools with two separate principals. And if we change the structures, again, this is a simple shift with DESI that's very easy to do, for whatever decision that you make.
Thanks. Teresa, I know you had to step away. So just for your information, David did make the motion to approve this, and Kate seconded it, and we're just having discussion before the vote.
Thank you for catching me up. I did speak with Superintendent Luff yesterday about some questions that I had, and he answered them in advance of the meeting. You know, as always, I always ask the budget questions, but if it's laid out in the memo, that there aren't any, you know, positive or negative budgetary ramifications. Mr. Luff, the one thing we were talking about yesterday that I think you were still looking into was just in terms of the building. So there isn't anything beyond what we've already done that would need to be done infrastructure-wise if it is designated as a film school, correct?
There is not.
Any other questions before we vote? All right, so I'm going to start with our remote participants. Dr. Giblin?
I will be in.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
David, sorry. And I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to one.
Thank you, and I will submit. I have the forms ready. And then Steph will be talking to DESI about the impact of making the change kind of a month after, but it will be done shortly. So thank you for that.
Great. All right. Anything else under your reports this evening?
That is it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to budget. Normally you would see Budget Subcommittee update meet at first. We did not have one in between, so we're going to go straight into open. I just realized just now that in your packets, Lisa Lif had actually asked me if she wanted me to link the materials that are in the folder to the packet, and I did not answer her back. So it's not linked, but in your folders, there is, there are some items from the Capitol Outlay Meeting that we had this week, last week, last week. My weeks are getting really, really crammed. So, sorry that it is not linked, but, so in the budget folder, in the Capitol Outlay folder, there is a couple of, there is the agenda that we went through and the packet that we talked about. Basically, the take-home is, the Capitol Outlay Plan was approved by the Capitol Outlay Committee. We also approved the five-year plan in concept that's there. Obviously, knowing the five-year plan is very much a snapshot in time, right, of what we hope to get done in five years. It's certainly not set in stone. A lot of people, you know, that was, that was something we wanted to be very clear when we made that vote, that this is, this is fluid, right? There's, there are things that could definitely change and move there. But specific to the schools, just so we are on the same page, was that we had the five buses on there, the five mini buses on the Capitol Outlay for this fall, that, for the Transportation Department, and those were part of that approval. And then as well, is the parking lot for the Savage Center is going to get done this year. I did have a quick conversation with Teresa about this, you know, from a Budget Subcommittee perspective. We approved it last year for the, for the, the Capitol Outlay for last year, and it just got delayed. So there was a discussion about whether we should take another vote just to kind of solidify it. I was a little late to be able to get Mr. Riccardi in here to talk to us about it, and we already heard about it last year, so I didn't want to do that. I mean, if, if we want to do that, we could do that tonight, but I just, I didn't think, since we did as a committee in this exact same membership vote on it last year, it wasn't something that was 100% necessary. But I mean, if we feel like we need it to, to codify that project on the plan, we can certainly do that. Teresa?
Yeah, I think we should think about, I mean, we voted last year, as you said, Amory, but then through the process, it didn't move forward, and that wasn't something that like came back to us. You know, we never said, hey, take it off, hey, delay it, it was just part of the process. So I think if we build town meeting, it does need to be done. It could help going into town meeting to have a current vote.
Yeah, that's true, and it does need to be done. God, it definitely does. And part of that is too, just in case anybody doesn't remember, they're going to put, there are some like, you know, water drainage things that are going to get taken care of. They're going to look at the layout. Maybe there's some, you know, angled parking that goes in, you know, along the entry and exit. So there's definitely some improvements that they're looking to do here as well. Mr. Riccardi did a really good job of describing how this building is in use, especially by little kids, and that it really, really needs to be done, and it should be this year and not delayed again, so.
When is, I'm sorry, when is the target now?
Target would be next summer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we would vote on it in the fall town meeting and appropriate the funds, but it would not actually get completed until probably late spring, summer, once school is out. But the idea is to match the senior center portion that looks really nice. Yeah, so if someone would like to make a motion to that effect, again, I didn't put it on there specifically because we did vote on it as a Capitol Outlay Committee already. So I just, I wasn't sure, you know, process-wise, since we weren't able to get in a vote before the Capitol Outlay vote, if we wanted to do that. But if, if somebody wouldn't mind making a motion to that effect, we can certainly vote on it tonight.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if folks can see the screen there, but that's 591,000.
Correct, yep. Thanks, Joan. Do you have a second?
Second.
I heard Kate first. All right, so I will start with our remote people, and you guys moved again. So Teresa?
Yeah.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that passes five to zero. Thank you for that. Mr. Mannion, did you have anything else to add about that meeting? You were there with me. I don't want to make sure everyone knows that we are being fully represented at these meetings now.
No, like you said, the Director of Facilities, Mr. Riccardi, he did an excellent job speaking about the Savage Parking Lot. He also spoke about needs at some of the other school buildings, very knowledgeable, and everything passed through the committee, so it'll go to the town meeting.
Any other questions on the Capitol Outlay?
Amory, just one question.
Sure.
I asked it in July. I don't know if you talked about it in August, but if you did, I apologize. Do we need to vote on the updated capital improvement plan policy?
Yes. I wanted to bring that to Budget Subcommittee first, and that's why we don't have it on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so do you want it on our agenda for next, beside next week?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, the Capitol, yes. And I think I, if I didn't send that to you already, I will send it. I got it from Mr. Donnelly a couple of weeks ago, and we just had not been able to meet as a Budget Subcommittee before, and I thought it was best to go through that first.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? We will move on to our next item on the agenda is discussion around the Extended Day Revolving Fund.
Thank you. So this is an update on a discussion item from the Quarter Four Report that we, we spoke of last week.
Do you want to share your screen? I mean, share it here, totally up to you.
Why don't you share it, and then I'll just click through it.
Give me two seconds, I'll pop it up.
All right. So at the last meeting, we discussed the Extended Day Revolving Fund, and we discussed specifically a journal entry, a final journal entry in FY '24. The committee approved administration to look into the journal entry. So we looked long and hard at expenses that we could transfer, and we heard the feedback that, that we wanted, that the committee wanted us to truly find expenses that were attributable to the Extended Day Program. So when we looked, we found some central administration, portions of central administrative salaries that worked specifically on the Extended Day, a portion of the former superintendent, former assistant superintendent, the Director of Technology, and a financial analyst. We, we already put some cost for this financial analyst on the Extended Day because the position works extensively on it, but we, we found that we could put a little bit extra. And when we added up all the portions that we thought reflected the time that was spent on the Extended Day, we came up with $30,345. The balance when we reported at that time during the Quarter Four Report was about $700,000, and the expectation from the town was something over $400,000. So we had a bit of room to work, but ultimately, we landed with the transfer of $30,345. So the final balance that we reported on August 27th was $700,000, and the final balance that will be, the final, final balance is $671,000 roughly, and that will be closed per the agreement to move this to the Rec Department, and we assume that that will return to free cash. So then the page two is just sort of a final update on the close of the year because we did do a Quarter Four Report. The actual year was closed the week, actually a few days after that. So it was basically closed on, we met on the 27th, and it was closed on the 29th. A few things happened. So we had this extended date transfer. So what that did was we moved costs from the operating budget to the Extended Day Fund, and that freed up some funds on the operating budget. And then as they were closing the books, a number of encumbrances that we were still accounting for ended up being closed. So additional encumbrances of about $117,000 were liquidated and not carried forward, and that improved the operating budget balance as well. So the total operating budget balance improvement was $147,000. This is improved over what we discussed in the Quarter Four Report. So we moved, we then transferred credits back to the Circuit Breaker, which is our primary carry forward for the schools, and ultimately, we were able to carry forward in Circuit Breaker a little over $3 million, $3,43,346. It was an increase of approximately $121,000 from the amount we had reported on the 27th, which was $2.9 million. So it's good news, we were able to improve our So it's good news, we were able to improve our Circuit Breaker carryforward, which gives us more flexibility and reserve as we go into FY25. We did, because of the way that the end-of-year worked out, we, some of that balance, we did as many transfers as we could before they started to close, but the balance, when we came in on Friday after they closed, it was $27,000. So formerly, we were saying that we were going to return about $879 to free cash, it's going to be about $27,088 returned to free cash. And that's ultimately the close of FY24.
Look at that, two-day turnaround and a whole new report.
And a lot more money found.
Yeah.
Any questions on Mr. Mannion's update?
Emery, just one question. I found the Extended Day Revolving Fund going back to free cash. I know it's not under our authority at this point, but do you know what's happening at town meeting? Is this one of the warrant articles for town meetings to appropriate that money?
I don't believe so, because we did that preemptively, right? So we did the 400,000 in the last town meeting with the.
Right, so I didn't know if we were going to do the rest of it.
Were we going to do the rest of it?
That was the intent, the intent that everything in their Extended Day Revolving Fund would stay with the Extended Day Revolving Fund, just with the mechanics that had to switch from school to town?
Right, right, and I thought, okay, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that the 400,000 was in the assumption that 400,000, we would have approximately $400,000 left, and that would go to free cash to, like, almost backfill the free cash we put in at the last town meeting and kind of be a wash. I didn't anticipate, like, they were, they were thinking they'd get near a million dollars in the Extended Day Revolving Fund with the 400,000 from the Spring Town Meeting and then another 400,000 from us.
Well, no, I just mean they're supposed to get, my understanding with our MOA is that they are supposed to get, like, every penny that was left in our revolving fund is supposed to stay with the Extended Day Revolving Fund, it just moves from school to town.
Yeah, but that, but the mechanism would be, you can't do it direct, it has to go to free cash first, and I think that's.
That's what I'm asking, so the remear of like 200,000-ish, is that on the fall town meeting or?
I understand what you're asking now, sorry.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge. It would just be going back to free cash, but I think that this was unanticipated, right, the additional, so I don't know if that conversation has been had with the.
And I, I don't think that by the time we realized how much money was going back, that we were, we were able to actually get a warrant in on time, right, because the warrant articles were due, I want to say like three weeks ago, it was three?
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a bit ago, but this would have been on the, right, and this would have been on the town side to probably put it together to get it into their revolving fund, and we didn't know until recently that we were going to have that additional.
That's correct.
Funding, so that, yeah, I'm not sure that the timing would have worked out.
It wasn't until the last school committee meeting that we said, oh, so we have another $300,000 more than we anticipated. Are there any other costs that we can allocate toward Extended Day above, you know, the 400,000? And which is where we came up with the $30,345 or something, but again, I don't know if Mr. Mizuko had the time to be able to get that, get that set. Certainly something we can ask him.
Yeah.
Go from there.
Yeah, I feel really strongly about this, because the money that, that we're currently talking about was collected by the school district for Extended Day, and, you know, the entire time we've been on the school committee, we've been very protective of that revolving fund, and we had talked about it would never be a profit and would only sustain and support that program, and, and that was part of the language that went in the MOA. So I understand this is a little out of our authority right now, but.
No, but that's something, yeah, that's something we should check, that's something we should check in.
Yeah, I will certainly, I'll talk to him in the morning, and I will discuss the MOA and the fact that that was, it's meant for Extended Day, and to ask him about the warrant article and how that's going to happen, to honor what the expectations were.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do, I do think because of the mechanics of free cash, now that the year's closed, it might have to drop to free cash, because they have to certify that at this town.
It definitely has to.
Reallocated.
Yeah, 100% it has to anyway, but I think what Teresa's asking is, is there then a fall town meeting warrant to, to pull the extra, almost $300,000, appropriate that from the free cash into the fund? So that, the, yeah, they, they reviewed yellow sheets and the draft warrant last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting. I don't, they're not signing them until, so there's, there may still be time, so we, I mean, that would be probably something that might be able to get in at the last minute, if it's just a single item, and I'm sure.
So, so if they were, if the current warrant was 400,000 and the final balance is 671,000, we would be basically talking about 271,000.
271, yeah, yep. To pretty much bring them up to where we were at the end of the balance. I mean, and Teresa's right, that's, that was the intent, was to make sure that all those monies that were paid by those families would go back into the programming.
All right, I will talk to Tony first thing tomorrow.
I don't think so, because it's, that's just what's going to happen, it's just going to, yeah, yep, just going to go to free cash, whether, you know, but we can still try to push a, push a little bit of authority on what happens to that free cash once it hits the town. In accordance with the MOA.
Yep. Sorry, before we move on from Sean, maybe this needs to be tabled, because it wasn't on the agenda, but I had a couple of people ask me about the state newcomer grant that we had applied for, and is that something that we could speak to in terms of Norwood being awarded that and its use, or is that appropriate for a different time?
What I can share with you is that we're going to come to you on October 13th, and we're going to discuss the grants, how we're allocating them, staffing, all that kind of stuff. So if we could wait till that, we'll make sure that one's on there.
Great.
If that works.
Any other discussion on the budget items before we move on?
No, but Emery, I could just, Kate, if you hear budget questions in the community or anybody, if you could just shoot Tim and I an email, because then we can make sure it gets on our Budget Subcommittee long agenda as well.
Okay, great. All right, so we will move on to the next item. Under Old Business is our Quarterly Middle School Building Committee Update. Who wants to lead this one off?
You want to brofle?
I got notes, up to you. What you doing?
You, why don't you start off?
Okay. All right, so we met as a building, a middle school building update, I think it was just this past Monday? It was this past Monday. 58% of the budget has been spent to date on the middle school building project. We've received 23.8 million of reimbursement from the MSBA thus far. That's about 31.9% of the total maximum reimbursement that we'll receive, about 52 million. The summer parking lot work has, was completed prior to school opening and given back to the school, so our, our staff and our students had an easier time getting in. We are on schedule for Phase One substantial completion by June 6, 2025, and there have been $994,307 of change orders thus far, which is about 15% of the total contingency, or 0.9% of the total project. And they're expecting about 15% more to be expended from the contingency account, which will likely be no more than 30% of the total costs as we go on. So we are on track and under budget, so.
Anyone want to add? Just a couple of other things, so the MSBA, MSNBC Middle School Building Committee would like to invite the rest of the school committee and other members of administration, if you'd like to come see. On Monday, October 21st, we will be doing an onsite visit. That onsite visit starts at 4:00 PM. That is by, at the end of the parking lot where the buses are, right by the construction gate closest to the field side, so if you're like going up the hill on Washington Street. So just, I would say, email one of us, so we can give numbers to the appropriate people, because we'll have to wear hard hats, which is fun, and then the meeting will be after that. November, the meeting is going to be Monday, the 18th, and just some of that is because of holidays, obviously Columbus Day, October, Veterans Day, November. And then in December, we will move back to the second Monday on December 9th. And then just the only other thing I wanted to add, you did great on the budget stuff, just some of the upcoming stuff, is FFNE, so furnitures, fixtures, and equipment and technology, so sort of the finishing pieces of the building. All that stuff went out to bid, and it came back, and we're going to have some decisions to make. Obviously, they do an estimate, and some of those estimates have come back, and they're a little bit over budget, which is fine, but we'll be figuring that out in the next couple of months, so.
Joan, you got a question? Comment? Discussion?
Question. What was the original contingency? What percentage? 30% seemed high to me.
30% is the total percentage that we'll use of the contingency. Do you have that number per view?
I do not.
Usually contingencies are around 20%.
Probably 30%.
You plan, you plan to go 100, you know, you plan to spend 20% of the project in contingency, so you can look at that as 120%, 30% that was spent on contingencies is high for what I, for building projects that I have been involved in.
So it's 30% of the total contingency that we budgeted, so.
That's much better, I love that answer.
Yeah.
And then, can the, I know that this is not necessarily school group, school committee per view, it's Middle School Building Committee per view, but can someone give us synopsis about the loading dock controversy that has been going on, and just kind of give a human explanation of it? I'm not sure if anyone on this committee can do that, or if that's better to ask.
I'm, I'm going to attempt. So obviously, there's a very regulated process when we go through and do any sort of public school building in Massachusetts, and these things are made, they're reviewed, just to catch anything, the example I'll give is like, you know, before we, they started pouring concrete, as they're reviewing plans, we found like there was an air duct that was in a wrong place, right, because it's reviewed, and then you fix it before it happens. I think it was something very similar to that, where, you know, you have the loading dock, you create it, you know, we looked at it, it was missed, and then we needed to just add the concrete to, to do the thing with the loading dock. So I think that it is more than common. There are people that do these things, sometimes people make mistakes, and, you know, we move on. Sort of another thing, just to take the time to do this too, I know the aisleways in the auditorium have been a, a big thing, but obviously Chairman Slater wrote a nice sort of rebuttal to that in the record, I think it was about a week ago, you know, again, where I think sometimes people hear what they want to hear and don't, you know, listen. Yes, it might look nice if you have multiple aisles, but this is what the building code says, and, you know, this is how you do it most efficiently. So I don't know if that's sufficient or not for you. Joan?
Yeah, it's just, there's just been a lot of back and forth about like, how could an architect miss putting a loading dock into a school? And, yeah, it's been covered thoroughly in the record, I just wasn't sure if anyone wanted to talk a little bit more about it.
Have I told you we're on time about the budget?
I, I do have to say, my, my outrage and concerns get a lot less when I hear that we've only used 30% of our contingency budget, and not that our contingency budget is 30% of the total price.
Well, just even better, it's 15% we've used so far of the total contingency budget, with an expectation that will only hit 30 by the end of the project maximum.
Good, so what are we going to value engineer back in? What are we going to value engineer back in?
Oh, don't get me started.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the Middle School Building Committee update? Okay. That brings us to policy. Who wants to take it away for Policy Subcommittee update?
I'll start, and then I'll hand it to Superintendent Luff for the Title IX policies. We met as a Subcommittee on September 6th at 10:30. I just linked our draft meeting minutes just recently, that's just for convenience, they're obviously in the folder, but we'll share out. Basically, it's just what I'm about to tell you guys. So this week, we're looking at recommended changes for Title IX policies, and with approval, we would post that for two weeks for the public to comment on, and then have a second vote on the 25th. We talked through those as a committee and feel comfortable with what's being proposed, which, again, Tim will go over. Our next meeting is going to be October 7th, but in addition to our second vote for Title IX, we're hoping that Tim is going to bring us some potential removals. Dr. Giblin suggested that we take out some policies that we're not necessarily using. So basically, that's part of a strategy that we're looking at with the new year in terms of how to attack policy maintenance, so to speak, and then, so we're looking at the, as we look at the long-term budget, we're looking at policy priorities, and then sort of peppering them in in a way that also is manageable for agendas overall. So right now, we've estimated, I, this isn't finalized, but we have a JIC, a few policies for October 16th as well, that we want to target as well. So that's what we're doing as a committee, we're just sort of chipping away. With Tim's help, in terms of his legal expertise and his policy expertise, he's sort of forwarding and presenting recommendations, then we review them again for everyone's understanding, and then we bring them to you guys. So with that, if there's not any questions, I'll hand it over to Superintendent Luff.
Let's make sure I get the right one here. Okay, so before you, in your packet, there's another memo, because I'm a memo guy. There's five draft policies that are being recommended, that are being recommended for approval, or were approved by the Policy Subcommittee, which met on September 6th, as has been done and stated. They are being recommended for approval based on the new Title IX regulations, which went into effect on August 1st, 2024, and these policies are, are provided to us in draft format through MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees and their legal team, based on the new Title IX process and legal recommendations. I will also note that we worked with our own counsel, Melissa Murray, and went through administrative training on these new regulations and everything that, that are in these particular policies tonight aligned with the training that she had given us in, in review of the policy. I will tell you that there is a, multiple court cases regarding these federal regulations that were changed, and so I'm going to present you with these policies, knowing that it's going to force us to have two distinct policies in play for the near future. The reason for that is because these 26 states filed court cases against the federal government on implementation of these regulations, really based on the fact that they add gender identity and sexual orientation into the nondiscrimination clauses. Now, that has no impact in Massachusetts, because the federal floor is one thing, and this is a federal law and federal regulations, and states can always choose to go above the floor. Massachusetts has already initiated gender identity and sexual orientation as protected classes, so those pieces aren't as impactful in Massachusetts. However, in these court cases, 13 of what or so have gone through, there's been injunctions filed, which means the court says, hey, until we solve this and resolve these things, we're going to hold off on allowing anybody in these states to implement these, these regulations until the court case is done. Now, although Massachusetts is not one of those states, one of the cases includes the ability for the injunction for anyone, and actually, I found more of this after I spoke to you, anyone that has a school attended, and this is in any state, by a family where they are part of Moms for Liberty, or Young America's Foundation, they can file to join the injunction list. So in Massachusetts, multiple schools, individual schools, not the state, have had requests to get on the injunction list, and just a week and a half ago, Norwood High School got on that injunction list. So we are not allowed to implement the new Title IX regulations at the high school until such a time that the court case is, is over. With that said, we are also bound to the previous Title IX regulations for anything that occurred prior to August 1st. So essentially, what I'm going to be requesting from you tonight is to review policies and approve policies that will be in play for the pre-K to, to grade eight, and then the high school will still remain on the, the older policies until this is, this is done. So again, there's one new policy in here, ACA-R, which will come back for approval at our next meeting. That is the only new policy, but, and there'll be opportunity for public comment on that. You may wish to receive public comment on all of these, I'll leave that totally up to you if you want to do that. I think the practice has been, if it's a change to a policy, you don't necessarily do that, but if it's a new policy, then you do, so. And rather than go through each and every one of these individually, I just want to talk about the major changes that are embedded inside all these. Essentially, the regulations, they broaden the definition of discrimination. Essentially, the regulations, they broaden the definition of discrimination based on sex to include not only discrimination based on sex stereotypes, characteristics, and pregnancy or related conditions, but also they added the sexual orientation and gender identity, as I had already referred to. Again, that's already recognized and protected in Massachusetts, so there is no impact on those protected, those folk in those protected classes. The term sex-based harassment has been defined now to be more broad, including sexual orientation and gender identity. It now recognizes this hostile environment in situations where it hadn't before, for any events that, that cause a hostile environment based on sex. And thresholds that we used to use under the, under the current regs, which were any event that is severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive, and each one of those had to be met prior to, to meet the threshold of Title IX processes, is now simply severe or pervasive, right? Or, rather than and. So there'll be more categories of, of opportunities here to, to investigate and that will fall under Title IX. However, there are more flexibility, there's more flexibility and informality in the procedures that we can use to kind of go through. In the past, and in the current policy, it requires a signed formal complaint for investigation, that is no longer an oral complaint will do to, to move us forward. And one single investigator model can be used now, whereas in the past, the decision-maker and the Title IX coordinator and the investigator all had to be different people. Now, the Title IX coordinator can do those things, our assistant principals or our principals could do those investigations and make the decisions. And I will always be there at the end of the road for the appeal as we move forward in the process. As you see here, sex-based harassment actually has a new definition, and I'll read this out loud so you can see it, because this is the, the major change. A school employee conditioning an educational benefit or service upon a person's participation in unwelcome sexual conduct, often called quid pro quo harassment, unwelcome sex-based conduct that, based on the totality of the circumstances, is subjectively and objectively offensive, and is so severe or pervasive that it limits or denies a person's equal access to the school's educational program or activity. That's what's referred to as hostile environment harassment. And what is still in there is sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, or stalking, are all, all fall within the Title IX processes and requirements. They've actually changed the liability piece, where school districts used to have actual knowledge, they need to have actual knowledge for liability, which means you had somebody tell you, you had evidence of it, you knew it happened, to now a district with knowledge of conduct that reasonably may constitute sex discrimination in this program or activity. So if we should have known, it would count, right? Whereas prior is you actually had to have facts and the data behind it. The new regs add these confidential employees to the mix, and I've been in discussion with, with the, the union about this as well, and how we would implement this and more conversations to come as we go. But essentially, it, it, it gives us the opportunity to identify confidential employees in each school, whereas every other employee has to report issues or complaints around Title IX. These confidential employees would be folks who would be there to hear complaints from staff, not have to make a report, but then also provide avenues for that person to go through to, to either make their complaint or get supports and kind of guide that person to there. So we're working on that, but that is one part of this change. And yeah, so that's, I mean, obviously, the policies are all based on those things. If you read through them, again, MASC has, has added, everything in yellow in these policies is there. There are a lot of shifts and moves based on where certain paragraphs were. I'm happy to open them and look at them with you, the policy subcommittee did review them, but ultimately tonight, I'm asking you to vote to approve these, these policies. And I will take any questions that you have.
Questions for Tim or? Yes, Teresa.
Thanks, Emily. I understand some of this is out of our hands, but I just want to say it makes me extremely uncomfortable to have two sets of policies for different schools. That goes against absolutely everything we've been trying to do, so I just want to go on background and say how extremely uncomfortable I am with that. I'm also trying to understand if you could explain, some of these policies, I believe MASC put out an update in August of 2023, and then just because of everything we've been having going on, we didn't, we didn't get to them. So we've already gone 13 months, unfortunately, without updating some of these policies. Is that correct?
No, these policies came out in, for August 1st, 2024, so it's just this year was the new. So they, the regulations were proposed in August of 2023. They did not go into effect and were not finalized to go into effect until August 1st, 2024. So these policies actually came out in the MASC newsletter this summer.
Okay, so they notified us a year ago that it was coming, but we were waiting for them.
Yes, they were supposed to be dropped like last, last fall, and they just didn't come until August, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Ms. Stewart, also, just one, one quick thing about your last comment. Even though we have two policies, even if we didn't have the policies in play, we would still be required to follow the laws and the regulations of the, the new law. So at least this gives us some guidance of how to do that, whereas we'd still be balancing two different laws and we'd have to do that either way, this would give us the ability to at least go through and know what we have to do in each circumstance.
Okay, so something we've talked a lot about in the school career in the past couple years is like policy versus law versus procedure versus contracts, like, right? We've worked very hard to put things in the right place. So that last part you just said, Mr. Luff, is that we still have to follow the law? And with the court case and the injunction, again, I understand we don't have any control over that, there are two different laws that we will be following, one for all of our schools except the high school, and then the other for the high school.
That's correct. So the regulations and the law of the regulations, and when I say regulations, I mean federal law and regulations that were implemented to enforce that law by the federal government. There are some that came into effect on, on, on August of 2021, right? I think it was 2021 or 2020, one of, one of those two, and those are the ones that we've been following and our policies have been created to ensure that we're following. The new regulations were meant to supersede and overrule the ones from 2020. Those ones are in play and required by the federal government for any district that is not part of that injunction list, or any school that is not part of that injunction list. So we are still required by law, federal law, to follow those new guidelines. We are required to follow the old law for the schools that are on the injunction list. So we're, we're bound to each of the laws, so the policies would just be in play to help us, obviously, implement the law that we're required to follow.
Okay, and can I ask one more question before I adjourn your question? But, Ms. Luff, these policies apply to students and staff?
That is correct. That is correct.
I feel like this is an each and everything.
Well, I mean, what it, what it is, it's, you know, once we have any kind of an allegation of, that, that fall under Title IX, we'll first identify where, right? And then we will identify the what in the process that we have to follow to go through it. You know, when we talk, when we talk about sex-based harassment versus sexual harassment, sexual harassment falls under sex-based harassment, right? So it'll still fall under it, it's just how we investigate and go through the process to complete it. And we do, and I have some work to do, as I shared, I think, with the policy subcommittee, on the grievance procedures themselves to make sure that those are implemented in a way that, that work. And I, honestly, I have some work to do on the grievance procedures for both sides of it, and I'm hoping to be able to find some middle ground that works for both, so the grievance procedures fall kind of uniformly together with minor, minor differences we go for.
What happens if we have a staff member who's not at the high school? Because we do have some staff members who are like both closely at high school.
It would be where the event actually occurred and the location where it occurred is how I would interpret that as we move forward. Now, look, I, I'm, I'm hoping that we don't have too many of these, of these cases, but I think it's gonna be a case-by-case determination, and honestly, it always is. Whenever we have an issue with Title IX, it's always a case-by-case conversation, a really solid plan of action on how we're gonna implement the grievance procedures and how we're gonna implement a plan of action and investigations. And we lay, we will lay that out before we even go forward with the process to make sure that we have it right based on the, the law that applies, policy that applies, and the structure that we follow.
Thank you.
It's not clean, there's no, there's no question.
Joe?
Mr. Luff, already, I just was gonna say, we discussed the fact that it's a nightmare to have two separate. And I actually recommend that we put ourselves on the injunction list and so that we have one set of private policies and procedures, but this is really the only way.
So I have a question, so what, never mind, actually, I just answered it myself. I just thought back to what you were saying and totally got it. Forget it.
And we still need a vote on this.
We need to vote on each of these policies and probably should take the, I'm guessing we should take them separately anyway, especially the one that's new, because that one will need to go for upper public comment for two weeks on our website before we take a final vote at our next meeting.
All of them?
Don't they all have to? No, because some of them are, some of them are edits, right? So we don't, yeah, so, correct me if I'm wrong, right? We, we, if they're edited, we don't, they don't have to go up for two weeks of public comment, it's just the new ones.
The only, the only new policy here is ACA-R is the only new one.
Yeah, I was like, no, I thought, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right on this.
Then I'm gonna make a motion to approve the draft and current policies of ACA, ACA-B.
No, you just want the draft, the draft is the one that we're changing it to. If we approve the current, then you're, oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm sorry, we just had that conversation, didn't we? Go, proceed.
So I make a motion to approve the drafts of draft ACA, draft ACAB, draft AC, draft AC-R in Dr. Luff's memo.
And if I, if I may, could you stipulate that it's for all schools? I say for all schools with the stipulation that any event that occurred prior to August 1st, 2024, and any future events at the Norwood High School through the lifting of the court injunction will be subject to the policies approved by the committee in 2024.
It's on there, it's in the last, it's the last paragraph.
Perfect, so I'm gonna say that's a friendly amendment, I accept.
So for Donna, she can use that language in your memo, right? Okay. Second, is there any other discussion on these policies?
I don't really have to do this, but I also wonder, and I don't know if this is separate or if this is possibly an addition to your motion, but I'm just thinking aloud. I know we don't usually put edit policies out for feedback, but this is a very different situation than any that we've been in before. I would actually want to hear what staff or students or the community have to say about the fact that this is the situation we're in.
I would not like to collect feedback that we can't implement.
That's, that's, that's the only thing I was gonna say, is that I, I hear what you're saying and I, and I, and I totally understand the intent, but there's not, you're right, there's nothing we can do with the feedback. We, we're bound by the law, the Massachusetts and federal law, so.
I believe training is our, as you said in the beginning with Melissa, staff is already being trained on this too.
Staff administrators, we're all trained on this at our retreat in July, in August. Yep. And our, and our staff members through ARX Ed platform and program were also trained on the implementation as well.
They, they were trained on this, that there's two separate things?
They were trained, our, our, ARX Ed trained them on the new, the new Title IX regulations. Now, now, staff, the staff members that were trained, the teachers, they aren't responsible for, for the investigation process and those pieces that are really involved here. So everything that they were trained on were identification of sex-based harassment and those things that would all fall really under both policies anyway, for the things that you can't do. But the investigation pieces and the, the new laws went into detailed training with the administrators at each of the schools.
I understand that all of you are saying there's nothing we can do, but I don't agree because we can use feedback to advocate, and that's also one of our five areas of responsibility.
We're still advocating for funding, we're still advocating for a number of things. I'm fine if we want to put this information out and say, with that specific caveat, right? Like, please tell us what you, if, if you want us to advocate differently from this, or if you, if you don't agree with this and want us to advocate for something else. But we can solicit feedback on a policy that we're not prepared, we're realistically not, excuse me, prepared to take on Desi or Massachusetts or jeopardize our funding over these things. And that's what we would be doing if we made changes to them.
And if, if I may, this is not the federal government, you know, requesting feedback in comment periods, right, to make a change to their regulation. This is a court case that's deciding whether it's legal to have gender identity and sexual orientation in the law and the regulations. So we have a kind of, unless we want to join into the court case, which is a federal court case, I don't know that, I guess that is an option, but that the feedback that we provide isn't the same as we normally do for advocacy purposes. What I will say too, is that without the policy, any events that occur, whenever these are investigated and let's say the Office of Civil Rights gets involved or whatever and starts to, to do an investigation, they will look to see if you have policies and procedures in place that make the law. So those, that's, that's one of the reasons I would push, push for this. And I don't have a prob, I have no problem with public comment and feedback. I, I, I would assume that you would get a lot, both for the regulations and the changes, and then you would get a, a certain amount of folks that, that would not want the policies changed. And it somewhat opens up a community conversation that is, is not the most wonderful and is more decisive, I think, in some cases too, which I would just be wary of, of having those conversations in the, in the community, so.
I think we can still get feedback without not approving, or without putting them out for the, the policy, you know, the policy feedback period, because it's not, I mean, even the one that we're gonna put out for two weeks, really, again, is, it's a, it's a legal thing, we really aren't gonna change it based on feedback, because we can't, because it would, then it wouldn't be in accordance with the laws. So I, I think that there's a way, there's a way to get feedback if, if, if there's a way, you know, a need to advocate without also, I don't know, I'm saying this really poorly, but I, I don't think we necessarily need to put these up on the website for that specific purpose of community feedback and voting again in two weeks, because that's not part of the procedures for amending, and it's not gonna change really our vote, because it's, these are in accordance with the law, does that make sense? Did I? I felt like that didn't quite.
I'm really sure that ends this, because I, I hear everything of all of your things, but if we vote on this, if I vote on this, I'll just speak for myself, I'm a yes vote on this, policy-wise. I'm endorsing the fact that there should be two different policies, and if you are a staff or a student at the high school, you currently have less rights afforded to you than if you're a staff or a student at any of our other schools. And to me, that very much goes against all the equity work that we, that all of us on this current school committee over the last three years have committed.
We are literally prevented by a court order from making it equitable. That's the problem.
And we can't, and we can't make it equitable in the reverse, because then we would be violating the law.
I'm not gonna sit on a loophole here, so I'm, I'm gonna be a no, because this is so against my, my integrity and my morals, and it's, it's so very wrong.
We could, could we do an amendment that, friendly amendment stating that the superintendent will notify us when circumstances change around the case, the injunction, to reevaluate the policies and to keep them aligned?
So.
As quickly as possible.
Just a quick note of that, so the vote that I asked for here was to future events at the Norwood High School through the lifting of the court injunction. So the motion there.
Oh, it's already in there, okay.
Once the court lifts the injunction, the new policies that you would be voting on are automatically going to affect the high school.
Oh, perfect.
We're adopting policies that if and when that injunction is lifted.
But our hands are tied otherwise in terms of the injunction.
I mean, if you wanted to, you could vote on these policies, right? And I would just have to implement the old policies, the old law, you know, I mean, so your vote could be, we want equitable policies and vote to promote this, these new policies for all students, and then I would just exercise my judgment in terms of the injunction and, you know, whenever there's an event at the high school and I have to follow a different procedure, I would. So if you, if that makes you feel better, Ms. Stewart too, right? You're, you're voting on a new policy for everyone, and then I'm just following the law and using the previous policy, similar to what I would do for anything that happened prior to August 1st. So that is, that is an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still don't, I still don't like that at school, but I feel better. Just then, my vote, my name, my signature is attached to, I voted that these policies are for everybody, and every policy that we have in our policy manual can be superseded by law.
That's right.
That's already, you know, we've talked about that before.
Well, why would we set something up where we would directly contradict? And the flip side is the old version is more restrictive in terms of equity work than the new version? No, wait, yes, I said that right, right?
I'm not saying keep the old versions. What I thought Mr. Luff said, maybe I heard it wrong, was we could vote that these are our policies under the Norwood School Committee for everybody, but then when, when and if a situation arises and Mr. Luff and his team have to work within procedure and then work within law, then because of the situation- then work within law, then because of the situation that's out of our hand, it may happen differently at the high school. Am I correct in that understanding?
That is, that is correct, yes. And you have legal advice from Ms. Marielitz. I have, you know, that we would have to follow the old pop policy, even if you voted on a new policy for those particular, um, those events. But yes, you would vote on the new policies for all Norwood Public School students in an equitable manner and then when an issue arise, if an issue arises, I would then have to follow the law and legal advice to follow older policies that are not, no longer in, um, in play.
Are you good with that?
I'm just going to say, I think that's a dangerous precedent to set with regard to policy work.
Yes. I'd like to just go back to.
I heard somebody said something, but I didn't hear what they said. Sorry.
I was going to ask David if he was okay with that rephrasing, re sort of framing, and then you said what you said, so maybe, say more because I don't, you, you don't like it.
I think precedent to know that our, we're setting up policies that are law.
Well, it doesn't, it just allows for the procedural acknowledgement of the injunction, I think.
Yeah, we weren't going to be listing both policies in, in my, um, assessment of this in the policy manual, like that wouldn't, we wouldn't be presenting old and new together, like here's the policy and here's for the high school. Like it would be the new policy listed in the policy manual and then knowing, I mean, that was kind of how I interpreted it anyway. I guess it's just, we're just stating it that the old policy would need to be followed if, if, and hopefully never, um, a situation arises.
Yeah. And actually, the action requested here is similar to, I, I guess it kind of goes along the lines. So the, the, the action requested was to vote to approve policies ACA, ACR, ACAB, AC, ACA dash R for all schools with the stipulation that any event that occurred prior to August 1st, 2024, and any future events at the Norwood High School through the lifting of the court injunction will be subject to the policies approved by the committee in 2022. So essentially, it just says,
Yeah.
You're approving all the policies to, to the, to actually what I had asked for in the first place, but knowing that I would have to look at the old policies if something came up because of a court injunction that is currently in place.
So that language for a vote works then for, I think satisfies everybody's concerns. It's a procedural.
Yeah.
David, are you?
It works.
Sorry, go ahead, Joan.
That works.
David, are you okay with the friendly amendment to go with the exact language in our memo?
He already made the friendly amendment for that.
Okay, well, yeah, but just, just.
Clarified, yes, accepted.
Thank you. And, and that was seconded. Kate, I think you seconded it?
Yep.
Awesome, okay. Um, any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to go individual. Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
I'm still having that tough time with this one. So, Anne Marie, if we vote on this in our policy manual, it is only the updated policy?
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a S as well, so that passes five to zero. Um, I think we do need to make a quick, um, clarification for Donna, um, because we were going quite, we read that off again. That was just for ACA, ACAB, AC and ACR. We wanted to take AC, sorry, ACR. We wanted to take AC AR separately.
So.
Because that is the new, new one.
Yes, so my, the next motion I was going to make is to approve the new draft policy ACA dash R, um, and then give it the two-week comment period would be my motion.
Okay. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this policy?
Is this clarification, this entire policy in our manual is straight from MASC template or did the policy subcommittee make any revisions?
There are no revisions. It's a straight from MASC. I, I obviously added Norwood-specific language, but that's about, that's it.
And Melissa was involved in training.
Yes.
Melissa has been involved.
Yes. And the, this particular policy and the other ones all align with the guidance that she's provided us.
Any other discussion? Okay, I will roll call vote. Joan?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a S as well, so that passes five to zero.
Thank you, and I will, um, work on the, um, grievance procedures too and bring them back for your review. Um, those are procedures, so, um, I anticipate that I'll create them and have them for, for your information, kind of a piece, and we'll update them as we need to, to make them work.
In the bi-weekly update.
Um, and then, of course, like we just said, this will be on our, uh, website for two weeks for public comment and then we will come back at our next, um, school committee meeting, uh, for a second vote. All right, um, so the next item under policy, um, Ms. Simmy Dunn and Mr. Mannion are going to talk to us about our student activities policy and student activities accounts.
Uh, that's, Mr. Mannion.
So you have a memo. This is a review and a vote on the student activities policy. Um, I'm just going to read, uh, a part of the policy that says the school committee shall annually, prior to the start of each school year, vote to establish or change the maximum balance that may be on deposit in each student activity checking account. And primarily, we're talking about the student activities for the middle school and high school. There, there may be, um, student activities at the elementaries that are probably minimally used, but primarily, we're talking about the middle school and the high school. And the current recommendation from the administration is that we, that the committee vote to establish the maximum balance for each student activity checking account at $25,000 and we believe that was the same amount, the same limits that were set last year. Um, we also want to mention that both the DESE and school committee guidelines, um, set forth that these student activity accounts should be, should have an internal audit each year and I believe an external audit every three years. So the business office, we're planning on meeting and just establishing some, you know, some preliminary discussions about, you know, setting up an audit this year, um, an internal audit, because this is my first year of the, of the two student activity accounts and we'll come forward to the committee if there's any additional measures that we need to take as we start to do those. And then lastly, we, we listed the clubs that are planned for the current year at both the middle school and the high school. So you can see in the memo, the clubs that are currently planned at the middle school. And then at the high school, there's a number of clubs, including four that were piloted last school year and they're planned for this school year.
Thank you. Um, so we're looking for our annual vote tonight to, um, keep the, um, student activities accounts at a maximum of $25,000. Um, and then, as we've done in previous years, uh, also vote on the, uh, clubs that are planned for the year, um, at each of the schools. Um, I know Teresa's going to remember. Remind me, do we, do we usually take this separately or we just kind of roll it into one vote?
Um, we usually took this separately because Karen would have two different documents, but I, we could probably get it together.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to?
To approve.
That was very eloquent. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Um, any other discussion? All right, I will roll call vote. Teresa?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a S as well, so that passes five to zero. Thank you for that.
Anne Marie, I just cleared my, um, form with Mr. Mannion. Sean, do you have access to the internal audits that Michelle had been previously or do you need those?
I, I haven't started to work on it, so if you have anything you want to share, that would be great. I do have many, many files, so they may be there, but if you have something you want to share with me, that would be great.
Okay, I think I know where they are, so I can.
Yeah.
All right, um, so anything else under policy, Kate, before we move on?
No, thanks.
Great. All right, so under new business, uh, our next item is, oh, sorry.
A question on the memo from Mr. Left, and I know the policy subcommittee is going to be looking at things going forward, um, there is the mention of the fiscal policies from last August that we did review and update last fall. Do we need to do that again?
We're being guided by the MASC update.
I think there's a dis.
So that's on there?
I will.
Well, we did the, is what I'm saying. Like they came out in August of '23 and I think it was last October we updated them.
Yeah, we're just making sure that we didn't miss anything because of how crazy it was and with Tim here, we're just take, putting a fine-tooth comb over it. Um, so it may not be an issue, Teresa, um, but, but we just want to make sure. Honestly, I did because of the way it was all like flying around, you know?
So I will do a review, Ms. Stewart, of, um, both August and it was, they were both in August. There was a financial policy update for MASC as well as a general policy update for MASC. I just want to go through each one of those, review to see if they were updated, if they were already updated, they will come forth. If they were not updated, and I think many, uh, there are some in the general policy updates that need to be, um, I will bring in those forward, um, some of the major ones that we have to change and also some that are going to be there, that were recommended for deletion from MASC too, from those updates, just to catch us up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I thought there were a couple that we didn't get to when the new one came out and there was all of a sudden another list. I thought there were a couple of financial ones that we didn't get to.
Yeah, I'm just speaking specifically the section B, um, because I remember we had actually worked on them in budget.
Yes, yeah, and I, and I thought, and I do think I remember when MASC came out with another update, there were even more on there and I was like, for the love of God.
If, if they're updated, I'm not touching them, right? I mean, that's more, more work than we have to do, so I will, I thank you for all the work that you did last year and it will save me from doing more next month.
All right, um, so the next item is appointment of school physicians and school nurses.
Oh, second. Okay, another memo in your packet that, um, uh, something that we haven't done, um, in a while in Norwood, and not every school district does this. Um, it's one of those kind of, you know, where you have nurses, for example, that are, are appointed through contract, right, through the unit A contract here. It's not something that usually comes to the radar, but I did want to, um, bring your attention to a master of law, uh, which actually requires the school committee to appoint the school physician and any registered nurses working within the school district. Uh, the school committee is also responsible within that law for assigning them to the public schools within the district. Uh, so below, below here in the memo, I have the language of the law itself and my request for you to appoint and approve the positions as, and locations as described in this memo. Um, I will be coming to you on an annual basis for reapproval as we move forward, but please note that regardless of this approval tonight, we have a contractual obligation with these nurses and therefore I just request that your, your, your approval with that, bearing that in mind, okay? Um, and the law is there, uh, and so we have, um, two actions here. One is to, uh, vote to appoint Jeremy Slawsburg, MD from Dedham Medical Pediatrics as the Norwood Public School School Physician for the 2024, 2025 school year, and also to vote to appoint and assign the Norwood Public School Nursing Staff for the 24, 25 school year as described in this memo with the understanding that administration may shift locations as the need arises and based on contractual, uh, requirements. Uh, and there's a list of folks here that you can see in your memo. Um, I won't, uh, read them all out loud, um, but it is a requirement that we, that we do this, so I'm asking for your vote tonight.
Any discussion?
Let's just mix them all up. That was a joke.
Anne Marie, just one question. Um, Patrick Slawsburg is the same physician we appointed last year, correct?
Yes.
My understanding, he's the same, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he was a new physician at Dedham Medical and he was very excited to help us out and we were freaking happy to have him. All right, any other discussion? Do I have any motions that we need?
Motion to approve.
Both?
Both of them.
Okay. Seconded by Kate?
Yes, second.
All right, any other discussion? I can ask for a roll call vote. Uh, Teresa?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a S as well.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so moving on to our final agenda item, um, is to appoint committee members for superintendent goal setting. Um, so as we have done in previous years, um, we have had two school committee members, uh, involved with the goal setting for the superintendent. Um, so basically, that's what we're looking to do tonight is to get maybe some volunteers or maybe I can string you up by your toenails and make you do it. Um, so to work with Mr. Left on his goal setting for the year, which would be fairly easy this year because it's pretty, pretty well set out for a new superintendent, but we want to make sure we're following our, our past practices and policies.
Uh, just remind me what the life cycle of the task is. Is it just?
That is a really good point. Um, so the goal setting would happen, um, what is the deadline? Because it's different. I'm trying to remember now what the, what the difference is for the, because really it's the, the, the entry plan is, is the major goal, but.
Right, you kind of did that.
You're, you're bound, well, we're bound by the contract too in this case and obviously the superintendent, um, evaluation will break. Um, but my understanding, at least for this year, is that we would meet shortly, uh, agree and develop two, uh, two, three goals or so, um, or more, depending if you want more. One of them being the entry plan being one of the goals, as Ms. Stewart has shared before.
What's the minimum?
Uh, I think it's two. No, I'm just kidding. And I think, is it three, uh, Ms. Stewart? I think it's three. I think it's three.
Yeah.
So three goals. Um, one would be the entry plan, two others that you decide are important, that we decide together are important collaboratively. Uh, we would kind of work on those goals. I would bring you draft goals prior to that, just so you have them to review with me and you would share feedback. And then my understanding is we would bring it back to the committee for, for full approval of those goals. Um, and then in February, obviously, we have a, um, a 360 evaluation cycle that we had discussed that we would review. Um, and then I think, I think May, is it May, April, May that we would finalize the evaluation? I think it's, I think it's May.
It's supposed to be a one-year cycle, um, for a new superintendent, but in the past, we were trying to get, um, evaluations done before the election so that whatever school committee member set the goals were the same school committee members who evaluated.
Yeah. I'd like to tell you that I came in after, uh, election because of COVID and it was a nightmare trying to do the evaluation, so.
Well, that's what happened to, to Joan and I as well. We, we needed to rectify that cycle, um, but that, that would then mean we were doing evaluation in March, which would then become like a nine-month evaluation, not a full year.
Yes, and under that system, new teachers, it's usually less than that and most teachers anyway, because you start in October and you're done around that time. So I hear that, but just the reality of not a great system that the state makes us use.
Yeah, and the principals are under a similar guideline, right? So I'll be meeting with them, um, in October to develop their goals and we will be evaluating them by, uh, May, June as well. Um, so it'll be short timeframe for them as well. And I, I, I for one, don't have an issue with the short timeline. Um, I know it's a one-year cycle. It is my first year, right? Um, I did start July 1, technically, you know, a little bit before that, uh, but certainly I will bring you, when it's time, uh, evidence for each of the standards. I will bring you evidence for the goals, right? So you have that for you, um, clearly laid out, uh, to be able to consider and review. Um, I, I would rather not spend the summer in the beginning of the new school year kind of going through the evaluation process. I think I would rather do that at the end of the school year when we have that data fresh. But I will leave it up to the committee to, let me know what you want to do.
Anne Marie, are we still expecting the two people to volunteer to not only work with Mr. Left to set the goals, but go through that whole process of determining what is the evidence and, and the same format we, we've done before?
That was my interpretation. Uh, Kate?
To Teresa's question, my, I. My term ends in April. I'm happy to help with the goal setting, but I, there's not a definite as to whether or not I would be, be able to be a part of the evaluate with the evaluation. be a part of the evaluate with, the evaluation.
Yeah, I think, I think right now, yeah, we're definitely just looking for the actual, for the, just to set the goals. I think we have to discuss definitely the.
Well, that's what Teresa's asking, is if that needs to be the same people. If it doesn't need to be the same people?
No, 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 no. What she's asking is, in the previous years, those people who have volunteered to help with the goals have also worked with the superintendent to set the actual, uh.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood.
The actual standards.
We created, we would choose the goals, we'd choose them, we'd work the indicators, it was all laid out, and then under that, you'd say, this is the evidence that we are looking for to go with everything.
Oh, gotcha.
And then we also would vote at the same time, what was that timeline going to look like? So when would we expect the superintendent to have their self-assessment back to us? When would we have our individual composite, our individual eval done and composite? That way, just as we set the goals, everybody's on the same page of what the timeline, expectation of the work is. And then that's the part, Kate, that I was saying, we've tried in the past like three years to shift it, that whoever was on the committee when we set the goals was the same committee who would do the evaluation. Because for Joan and Anne-Marie and I, we were all in a situation where, you know, we got elected in April, and then in May, we were expected to be evaluating the superintendent.
Yeah, so not the same exact people who, like, worked with the superintendent to set the goals are doing, like, as, as a whole. Like, the same five of us who approve it should be the same five of us who evaluate. However, that would mean we'd have to start the process in March, which is very few months.
Well, we're only starting it in February, and then March is when you would do the public composite part.
Right. And whether that timeline was. If that works.
Okay, I will do it, but this is still the last one I'm doing.
Thanks for being so excited.
I, I don't wanna talk about the state rubric and destiny.
I thought it would give you, you know, hives, and you'd wanna stay away from it on all possible. Okay, David, so you, you wanna, you wanna?
I'll be one, yeah.
David volunteers his tribute. Do, do we have another person who would, Joan is passing the buck on that one?
I have done my time doing those things. I've been involved in the superintendent evaluation for four out of the five years, five out of the six years, for a long time.
Yeah, thanks, Joan. I appreciate it.
No problem.
In all fairness, do we need to?
I was gonna say, if, if you guys are all.
You do, okay. I'm just asking because it's always difficult to get more than one person scheduled.
If we have three goals and one of them is already set, it might be a little bit, I mean, it's all coming to you guys anyway for approval, but whatever you want.
Right.
So.
You, you need to so that it's a more balanced.
So there can be, so there can be ties? I mean, everything comes to you guys to get approved, so you four need to make the decision and take the vote. I will do it, and somebody else can if you want, up to you.
Yeah, I'm just responding to Anne-Marie and saying, yeah, you need to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to help, but I'm still unclear as if it's gonna be a problem at problem if I'm not here.
No, 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 absolutely not. Yeah, you just won't be here to, you just won't be here to do the actual evaluation.
I will, I'm happy to help. I am excited to help. Count me in!
All right.
I'm excited.
I put it in here, I think I, did I?
We need a vote, so.
I was gonna say, I did put it in here as a vote.
I would, I will make a motion to, for myself and Kate to head up the superintendent goal setting group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? I didn't think so. Teresa?
Yes.
Joan? Yeah, thank you. That's it. Joan said yes, for the, for the record, read that into the record. Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That's five to zero. Thank you very much for volunteering.
You're so welcome.
I'm telling you, David is literally gonna break out in hives when you break out that rubric.
I'll try to make it easy for him.
All right, so that is our last agenda item. That brings us to school committee addenda. Teresa, do you have anything for us this evening?
I have nothing prepared. Just welcome back, everybody, to another school year. Mr. Luff and Dr. Mannion, thank you so much for all the work you did for PD and convocation and sharing the presentation, slides of those earlier. That was really touching, especially to that student. That was very powerful. And, you know, Tim, when we, when we interviewed you and in all the meetings that I've had with you, we chose you as our superintendent. I know you've always talked a lot about those relationships and connection, just seeing our students and our staff as people. And I wholeheartedly agree with that approach. And I'm just really excited. If that is the message that's getting out there for everybody in our community, there could be a better one. So, thank you.
Joan?
I also don't have anything prepared, other than to say welcome back. Because I'm a parent of middle schoolers, I give special gratitude to all of the middle school staff and teachers, literally everybody, bus drivers, everybody associated with middle school, because middle school seems, you are a special breed of people, and I appreciate you wholeheartedly, even more so in these current moments. I wanna thank our school lunch folks for coming back. That is the highlight, no offense to anyone else, but that's the highlight of my kids' day, is what they get to pick for lunch in the cafeteria, and it sounds wonderful. And I want to expand, extend also special thanks to Unit A for ratifying their contract. Thank you. As well as, I'm hoping that we can be excited about we be ratifying their contract as well. A lot of really hard work went into that, a lot of sacrifices on both sides. But I think we have a contract that takes care of our teachers. We have a lot of hard work to do to, to make that fit, fit fiscally with us, but I think it's the best contract for our district that provides for our teachers and, and still allows us to provide for our students in a healthy and holistic manner. So I just wanna say thank you to everybody who's been involved in that.
Kate? Yes, I echo my colleagues and also welcome everybody back. My, my own kids have a really positive energy right now, and it feels like that in this room, and it feels like that just in the past week and a half with back to school. So I'm really grateful for that. I'm grateful for all the staff and teachers as well. And I'm excited to see the Sound of Music this weekend to support friends and our theater program. And I'm excited to hear people's feedback, to get to see some folks on Saturday morning at 10 at The Bolsh, to get a feel for what people are thinking about in terms of the elementary study. So just a reminder to that as well, that we will be there again with our consultant presentation to sort of, for people who haven't had a chance to really look, you know, see what, what is what, and then cover some frequently asked questions. So that's all I have. Thank you.
David?
Nothing new.
And I will just, for the fourth time, echo, welcome back. Thank you for having me at convocation. It was, it was, it was infectious. That's, that's the best word I can say. And if Mr. Luff is going to post the convocation and that wonderful lip sync video, I really cannot highly recommend it enough. I, I.
On demand, right now, on MCM.
Literally made my day. It was, it was really fantastic just to see all of, you know, the administrators and just letting loose. And it was, you know, all the students who were there too, just absolutely loved seeing everybody, you know, the, some of the dress up. I just, I just can't, you just, it just was fantastic. But it was, it was a wonderful convocation. I was really excited. I did slip out before the, the speaker, just because, you know, work, ugh. But everything before that, the students were so excited, the teachers were seemed so excited, the administrators were so excited. It was just a really, really exciting time and just made everybody, made me really excited for the school year and everything that we can accomplish this year. So that does it. Brings us to the end of our meeting. We do not have an executive session scheduled tonight, so we will actually be adjourning the meeting. I think I did this last week where I was like, I was stunned on how to actually adjourn a meeting in public. Wait, one sec. We will have our next regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 25th. Thank you. We will be, again, back here at the Savage Center, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Teresa, Kate seconded by David. And I need to poll Teresa?
Yeah.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much for joining us this evening, and have a wonderful week.